I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, August 28th, 2023, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hellman, we have some files and some items in the table file.
We do. Board members have an updated report for the superintendent's area focus document for 2324. We have a number of items in the personnel file, including appointments, increase, decreases, and changes in assignment. And then we also have one additional recommendation for approving an increase in the hourly rate for ninth grade and junior varsity football games from seventy dollars to eighty dollars for both of those events. That was after conducting a local market analysis. So those are the items in the table file for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, move by Amy, second. Hey Jenny, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. I need to have anybody signed up for public comment? Okay, we'll move on to item four, announcements and recognitions, Dr. Hellman.
Yes, we have several this evening. First, we want to acknowledge the 145 incoming kindergarten students who participated in the Bridges to Kindergarten Program through Community Education. Bridges to Kindergarten is a free summer program held at each of our three elementary schools for one week to help ease the transition for these students into kindergarten. And so many thanks to our district preschool and kindergarten teachers, community, preschool teachers, and educational assistants who worked in this program. It's great for students to be able to get into their school for a week before the school year starts, just get acclimated a bit. Great program. We've been running for some time and wonderful that we're able to hold it at each elementary school. This morning, we held our annual staff appreciation breakfast and welcome program at the middle school. So this is the one time a year where we get to bring all district staff together, and we have an opportunity to hear from some student speakers, recognize people for milestones in their user of service, several awards, and then we are able to have some presentations. And so we want to congratulate and thank rising sixth or sixth grader Ariel Lee, who was from Bridgewater Elementary as an elementary student, eighth grader Fisher Kepper from Northfield Middle School, and Lena Brown representing Northfield High School. These student speakers were outstanding. They did an excellent job, and there's just nothing better than hearing our own students talk to our staff about the quality of their experience in our schools to motivate you at the start of the year. So these student speakers were nothing short of sensational. We also presented several awards. NEA President Kevin Dahl presented the Friend of Education Award to Howard White for his numerous years of volunteering in our district, specifically in our high school EL program. The Educational Assistant of the Year went to Katie Malika, a longtime educational assistant in the district, so happy for Katie. And then Teacher of the Year, Amy Dory, from the Northfield Community Education Center, was the NEA's Teacher of the Year. An award that we started last year recognizes people who are neither a teacher nor an educational assistant, but who provide outstanding service to the district. And Northfield High School Child Nutrition Team Member Rose Bryson received this year's Outstanding Service Award. We also recognized people for milestones in their service with the district, so we congratulated Jennifer Streifland, Emiliana Grautman, Jennifer Lompart, Nicole Papke, TJ Webe, Jane Streits, and Lori Mullin on 20 years of service with the district. We recognized Greg Gellino, Elizabeth Larson, Greg Sickler, Michelle Sickler, Dana Holden, and Dolly Larson for their 25 years with the school district, and 30 years for Kevin Dahl, Dan Cus, Dave Piper, and Kim Slagers. And if you read an article in the Star Tribune, it's either today or yesterday by Ted Calderi. He's done some mathematics that the mode, right? So when you line up all of the years of experience of teachers in Minnesota, he's done this analysis. When you look at the mode, which is what is the number that appears the most? The mode for years of experience for Minnesota teachers now is one, which means we have a much newer staff than we have had across the state in years. And so to read those names, 20, 25, and 30 years, I think really is a testament to the district and to our staff members for their commitment and just this great partnership that we have with our staff to serve students in the community. So really a wonderful morning today, always fun, happy to have everybody together, and just seeing people to be able to connect and getting ready to start the school year next week, very exciting. While we'll do a deeper dive into this topic in the coming month, I do want to point out some wins that we had with from the recent 2023 MCA results, which were published by the Minnesota Department of Education on August 24th. So again, Hope Langston, Director of Instructional Services, will be here, believe it or not, October, to really do a much deeper dive into our results in conjunction with our annual report on our World's Best Workforce Report. But I do want to highlight a few things for you. So students take the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Tests, often referred to as the MCAs for short, in reading and mathematics in grades three through eight, in grade 10 for reading, in grade 11 for mathematics, and then students in grade five, eight, and 10 take the MCA Science Test, just to ground people in what, who takes the test. So we're really happy to share with you that when we look at proficiency rates for all students, the Northfield School District students outperform state proficiency rates by double digits in reading, mathematics, and science. When we compare ourselves to the rest of the schools, school districts in the Big Nine Conference, we outperformed Big Nine Conference districts for that all-students category in proficiency for reading, math, and science. We outperformed Big Nine Conference districts for students who qualified for free or reduced-price lunch on the reading, math, and science assessments. Students who qualified for English language services outperformed Big Nine Conference districts on the mathematics assessment, and students who received special education services outperformed all Big Nine districts on the reading assessment. Now, I could keep going through this, as you can imagine, all of the permutations that there are, but these are really some really great results comparing ourselves to the rest of the state, and then, of course, to our friends in the Big Nine. A couple of other items that I'd like to point out specifically to our benchmark of grade three reading. We know that that is just this really important benchmark. And I'm thrilled to share with you that Northfield third graders finished 21st of 316 school districts who tested 10 or more students. This was a 10% increase year over year, over last year's results. And another very important point about our vision of preparing every student for lifelong success. The district's third grade reading results for students who qualified for free or reduced lunch, free or reduced-price lunch, increased by 19% year over year and outpaced the state proficiency rate for that demographic group by 20%. So a lot of good things happening with that benchmark of grade three reading this year. When it goes to seventh grade, we want to highlight seventh grade. Our seventh grade reading results ranked 22nd of 315 districts who tested 10 or more students. This performance was better than 93% of Minnesota districts. In mathematics, our seventh graders ranked 29th of 315 districts who tested 10 or more students and performed better than 91% of districts testing 10 or more students. And so these are just a few of the highlights. Of course, along with the highlights, there are also areas for growth and challenges that we are responding to. We don't just say, oh, I don't have to do it here, right? We lean in, we make sure that we take action. One example is we are accelerating our math curriculum review. It was supposed to be two years out. We're going to accelerate that to start this year just because that's an area where we see some greater opportunities for growth. So I just really want to congratulate our students and their families who support them, some really great results. When we hear the statewide narrative about schools being flat or regressing, we can point to data that shows that in Northfield, we are outpacing the state averages substantially in many areas. And then in those spaces where we do need improvement, we don't whine about it, we don't complain about it, we lean in, and we say, what's next? What's our next action to take? And so thanks to our students, to our families, and to our teachers who have really done some amazing work. Our third grade reading results are not by accident. As we've told you, we've got 50-plus people who have been taking the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, or commonly known as Letters Training, and we are seeing that payoff. So while we're not to where we want to be yet, we really took some great strides forward this year, and our students and our staff are to be commended. So those are the announcements for August 28th.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. Great news about the third grade reading and our third and seventh grade and MCA results really goes to the quality of our teachers and the hard work of our students. Any other comments or announcements from the board members? Okay, good. Okay, item five is our items for discussion and reports. First step is principal, middle school principal Greg Gellino will present to the board the continuous school improvement plan for the middle school, including a progress report on the goals set for the last academic year and this upcoming year, 2324. Welcome, Greg.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. Pretty excited about this report this year. Just I'll get into the future goals, but it seems to, I'm excited because of the fact that I think other years, there is a lot of factors involved, and this one, I think, is we can really make some really significant change with some things we have going on at the middle school. So I'll jump right in. First of all, as all of you know, we really want to focus on everything we do on our strategic plan and just our vision of preparing every student for lifelong success. That's something that I spoke to the staff about today, is really making sure that stays in the forefront as well as our strategic commitments as well as following the benchmarks. And I talked to our staff about the benchmarks just slightly about how not everyone maybe specifically hits the middle school, but several of them do, whether it be specifically or in a little bit more of a roundabout way, building that foundation for high school. We want to move these forward. So I'm impressed upon them when they're making decisions through PLCs or through their curriculum. They really keep these things in mind. Why the school improvement plan? Again, we want to make sure that as a district, we're establishing clear, shared goals, and then that kind of just drills down and aligns the middle school specifically, our goals with the district's strategic plan. And then the hope is that this inspires our teachers to take action. They really kind of have a focus for the year and something they can really dig their teeth in. And again, it's the visual of the arrows all pointing the same direction, making sure we're all aligned with the ultimate goal of preparing every student for lifelong success. So key reflections. Yep, that's my granddaughter. That's one of my granddaughters, my oldest one. Yep, classes are upside down. It's what happens when a 14-month-old gets to put them on herself. And she's, she is a ham. Literally, her name's Holly Ann Mahaffey, so it's ham. So she loves getting a laugh, so she just keeps going with stuff. So had to throw that picture in there. My second granddaughter will get in next year. So first of all, I'm very proud of the work we did last year. The middle school had some, what I think challenges that were pretty significant, not in necessarily scope, but things that really weighed on our staff. The budget reduction process, as all of you know, it's a hard process. It's a necessary process to go through. But there are some things specifically with the middle school, I think, weighed really heavy on people, some unknowns, some really significant possible changes. And so that really caused our staff a lot of kind of angst and anxiety. But I'm proud of them because they stayed steadfast to focusing on kids and making sure that our students got what they need, both in the classroom, socially, emotionally. That never wavered, no matter what was going on kind of outside of the school day. They stayed ultra-focused during the school, during the school day. The second one is the avid. Avid last year, if we recall, just we had a seventh grade cohort. I think I feel that that was very successful. I'm saying that because we had only a couple, a few students that chose not to do avid in eighth grade. But even more so, we opened it up to those spots to our now-current eighth graders, seventh graders last year to see, hey, does anyone want to join in? We have some extra spots, and we got a lot of people to apply. So they're learning the strategies for avid, and they're liking it. They see value to it, to the point where they said, yeah, I want to be a part of that. And that's a really good place for us to be, and early on in the process. So this year, we will have a seventh grade cohort again, and then our seventh graders moved to eighth grade, so we have two cohorts going on, so we're pretty excited about that. And the last two are specific to Mr. O'Keefe and I. For the past two years, our staff through the Employee Engagement, which is now Employee Experience Survey, they have said that they want to see us in classrooms more, and we've really worked on that. We've tried some different strategies, but last year, we really seemed to kind of hit a home run with it, where that's about three times what we typically have done in a year, getting through 200 classrooms and giving feedback to at least 200 people. So we feel pretty good about that. I think it's really set the base where we find kind of that rhythm to be able to make sure in our day, we have a system in place to make sure we're getting in classrooms. Our academic goals for last year, we had, this is an avid one, and our work of strategies is we really wanted to build that base with our staff to really start implementing these strategies, so it was just commonplace. And we kind of, as an avid site team in our building, we kind of had an eye of, oh, maybe one or two, we want to make sure they start getting grounded, and we'll build from there. And what happened was, is actually instead of one or two, it was really three or four. And we actually saw an increase from the fall to the spring, doing a survey with staff that they really started really catching on, and they're starting to make comments where they're seeing not only the benefits in the classroom and with students, but they see students coming in with that pre-knowledge, so they're not having to spend as much on the front end because students are picking up on that. And we see that continuing moving forward as well. Our second academic goal was really focusing in on our F's during the second quarter. I tell our middle school staff that we really want to look at all four quarters, but this is, I believe, part of a grant. So we wrote it as it's written in the grant, even though we want to look at all the quarters. We, this is the number, quarter two is really what we need to report back on. There's some fairly good news built in within this, and then we have some work to do and some others. So the sixth and seventh grade did make some progress. They're a long ways away from the 9%, and eighth grade, as you can see, did not fare as well as we had hoped. But we spent today going through results. Hope actually Langston presented to our staff the data with this goal, which hopefully will ground our staff working with PLCs moving forward. But it also really begged the question on why. We have to get to the why. Why are these things happening? Why are kids not being as successful as they should be? It can't be just about adjusting the grading practices or amount of homework and stuff. There's an underlying thing that we have to get to. So I'm optimistic that I think people, we're ready as a staff to really dig in and really go deeper to figure out what's going on. We have two equity goals from last year. The first one has to do with participating in athletics and activities after school. The 24.1% is the demographics for our students of color, and that's always needs to be kind of our target. We'd love to see to exceed that, but we want to really strive for that. Now, this is kind of a mixed message piece of this. When I originally did the goal, the idea was to do athletics and activities like Honor Square and Plays and Spelling Bee and those types of things, and I did not take into account the Middle School Youth Center. I can't give you a reason why, other than the fact maybe it wasn't a middle school-specific program, so I didn't include it. So if you leave the Middle School Youth Center out of the equation, we did not make that goal. However, I did get the data this summer with the Middle School Youth Center, and if you add in, it is an activity. It's a great activity for students to participate in. We actually would have met the goal. So I should have included it. I think the more representative view of this is, yes, we are meeting this goal because we have our student, all students, but students of color are being represented in all of our active school activities, which does include the Middle School Youth Center. And the second one has to do with referrals to the office, and that's not just little things. It's more of the bigger issues that Mr. O'Keefe and I have to manage and talk to families and stuff. So that's a little bit more challenging. Wasn't sure how that was going to go. The good news is that as a staff, we were able to really work on some strategies, which decreased the number of referrals we had. The kind of not as good news is the fact that we still remained higher than we want to see with our students of color. Now, I will say, and I didn't bring the actual number with me, so I apologize for that, but we came, we came within what I'll call reason is fairly close. We have work to do, and I think through our new Minnesota MTSS process that we're implementing, as we'll see in the goals for next year, I do think that'll address this. So we move on to this year's goals. This graphic, can't remember who was all here when we came up with the graphic, but the graphic still holds for the middle school. We really have four key pieces. We want to keep the career in college readiness, choice readiness in the forefront as well as our middle school pride program, avid program. We always want to keep in mind the social-emotional piece. I like the graphic because it really encompasses what the middle school is about. So as we look into this coming year, this goal is new. This goal is 100% focused around the Employee Experience Survey, and it was really clear with the survey results that we had that we have a, I think we have a strong culture, positive culture at the middle school, but staff were feeling not as connected in that realm this year and really wanted to get back to. And there's some things that, to be honest, when we started hitting COVID, we quit doing. And then when we came back, and last year with various things going on, we didn't do maybe some of the items that we should have done, just take time for ourselves as a staff to be able to connect as a staff, and we're going to recommit to those. The other thing that came through loud and clear is really wanting some other avenues to give voice to different decisions being made or giving more feedback. We've always given that opportunity. We continue to give that opportunity, but I've kind of created a process to maybe address that even more. So moving forward, what we'll do, we, I have set up what I'm calling a four-step process. So I'm leveraging our two staff meetings a month, along with, we have a building cabinet where departments come together, and we're kind of combining those two things to create kind of a decision-making process, so our decision/feedback process. So staff do have a voice, have time to discuss, have time to give questions back, and it's kind of a cycled piece where we can, then there's staff know that, hey, here's where this is going. In addition to that, I've shared with the staff actually this evening, they'll have some other documents to be able to record some of their discussions, to be able to think through the process themselves, to hopefully then be not only just more transparent, but a little bit more open with the staff on how decisions are made. The other piece is that we are going to recommit ourselves to doing some team building at the middle school, take some time, like I said, for ourselves. We want people to feel good about coming to work. They've made it really clear that they feel good about their colleagues. They feel, they think they're intrinsically motivated, but they still want to be able to have that time outside of talking curriculum, outside and talking kids, to just connect as adults. And so we factored in some of those things this year that I think will benefit us, getting back to some of the things we've done in the past. And then the last one is an add. So I am going to do some listening sessions, some morning and afternoon listening sessions once a month. It's totally optional if people want to show up and just either whether it be voice concerns, give feedback. It's just another opportunity to share with me, have my ear, so they are able to communicate, and again, have that dialogue. I made it really clear when I presented this today that this does not replace my open-door policy. I have always had an open-door policy. The only time I shut my door is if I'm on the phone or if I'm meeting with a staff member. And so I expect and I really encourage people to just walk in. I don't care what I'm doing. If my door is open, they're free to come in and interrupt me. We'll have a seat at the table that's outside around my desk, and we'll have a conversation. So this is in addition to that. I don't want people to think that this is now the new way, so I did make that clear today. This one's a little tricky. I'm not sure if this is going to be a great way to monitor this, but we're going to give it a shot. It's really just trying to figure out and do a best estimate of how many people are participating now in the listening sessions. That one's fairly easy. How many people walked through my office? How many people participate in the staff meetings? The socials we do, those types of things, to be able to quantify the number of staff that are kind of getting involved at this process. This goal is the same as the one from last year, is the one part of the grant. The numbers there, 25.3, 25.6, and 46.1 are the numbers from last year. So the goal, the baseline was 31%. You can see that, like I'd stated before, the sixth and seventh grade made some progress, far reach from 9%, so we all have some work to do. Today, as I mentioned, Hope Langston was presenting to everyone about the data, diving a little bit deeper, kind of what does it mean? And that's a big piece of it. I do think now with PLCs, last year, we took a bird walk away from department PLCs, and we changed it, and we went to grade level or team PLCs, and that had a ton of value. There's some people that were a little bit nervous about that, but I can tell you that the vast majority of the staff said, nope, I get it now. That was very worthwhile. They typically then prefaced it by saying, but I'd still kind of like to go back to this because they want to work on the curricular piece. And I think now's good, that's the time now to turn that around and do that. And I think that'll address these Fs. May not solve it at first, but I think it's going to help us go in the right direction. I'll give quarterly updates on that. It's easy enough to do that at quarter time, as well as the PLC administrators going through and sitting in on PLCs to be able to ask questions. I've encouraged people, and I'll continue to do that for our staff if they want me to show up to a PLC because they have questions, want to have a dialogue about anything that they're working on to invite me in. I have no problem doing extra, you know, go to an additional PLC. We'll just, we have to get that dialogue. We have to have those tough conversations. Our equity goal for this coming year is still the referral process. Again, we want to get down to that demographic percent or, you know, as close as we can, ideally do even better. And we're going to do that by, again, the data was presented to the staff. We will do a little bit more deeper dive as we get going. But the biggest one is the second bullet point. The second bullet point talks about the MTSS system structure that we're implementing as a district. And it's a fabulous structure, but it is a considerably large change at the middle school. And so we started wearing the groundwork for that last year. We're diving in. They heard a little bit more about it today. But it's really, there needs to be some training of our staff on what this means. I will say with some of the new legislation on behavior and non-exclusionary things, that there is room there for that training and discussions to be had, and the importance of the documentation is only going to strengthen this process because it is a key piece to the MTSS process. And part of what I explained to staff today is the more data we get, the more time, the more time we spend documenting, we're going to get a better picture. If you have a couple of data points, it's tough to make any conclusions. If you have multiple data points, things become a lot more clear, and it's able to then address the high needs of the, kind of the hotspots, so to speak. So that's where that system, when it gets fully up and running, should benefit us. To monitor this one, we have an MTSS team, which has our student supporter, our school counselor, social worker, school psychologist, myself is on that, as well as some of our interventionists, as well as our ML teacher, Ellen Trotman, and then we'll also be adding a special ed teacher and a general ed teacher sometime early this year to make up our full team, and that team will then really dive deep and report back to staff twice a quarter on how we're doing. And that's what I have for you. Questions?
Thank you, Greg. Very thorough. Board members, do you have any questions? Ben?
Thanks, Greg. That was good and informative. Can you talk a little bit about more, a little more about the MTSS process and what kind of data? You talk a lot about data, but just curious what that actually looks like in practice?
Sure. We're part of, the district's part of a grant, and so through MDE. And so there's a team of district-wide team that has been going through training through MDE. We've had some of our building levels doing that. And it's really, it's, I won't go into too much detail. That could be a presentation on its own. But basically, it is a system to be able to document not only just the academic side, but the social-emotional needs of students as well as the behavior and what's going on. And it sets up, there's three tiers, there's a tier one, tier two, and tier three. And the classroom teacher kind of is responsible for the tier one umbrella. And so that's the part of the training that I think is a big shift, at least I'll speak for the middle school, that's really re-grounding our teachers on what their responsibility is at tier one. And again, that's And again, that's the academic piece, I think we do a pretty good job. It's the behavior and social emotional piece in the classroom that becomes a little bit more of a challenge. And that's where I think some people, um, we need to spend some time and talk about, hey, here's some ways, um, to, um, improve upon maybe the tier one in the classroom. Our school counselors will be a big piece of that as well as our school psychologist. Um, and then all that gets documented in our Skyward system. And then allows us to then run reports and figure out, again, the more data you have, the, but you can see, okay, where are we kind of missing the mark? And with, not only just with what students, but what types of behaviors? And do we have to do re-teaching? Um, if it has to do with behaviors or if there's a social emotional need that we're missing that, hey, we better sit, we better take a step back and how, what can we do to address the student body? Because we're seeing this more and more of a concern. Does that get you what you need?
It does. And then does the tier two and three, is that, what does that involve?
Yeah. So tier, tier two would be like, if you think about an intervention. So it's not just the classroom teacher, but it's an actual, where you start going into the interventionist. It may be, uh, um, an access math or reading intervention. It could be, um, partially, it could be a little bit special ed as well. And there's overlap on a lot of these or tier three is then it's really you're becoming more and more intense. The higher you go, so it may not only be in special ed, but maybe multiple hours of service in special ed, um, for that service to meet the students' needs. And then the ideally is a student is then fluent. So if the student ends up working their way towards a, let's say, extreme case, a level, uh, tier three, then hopefully you give them the skills they need where they start working their way back the other way.
And then one more question.
If you don't, go for it. I have nowhere to go.
When we talk about referrals, what is that? What does that mean, I guess, in terms of what constitutes a referral?
Yeah. Well, teachers, what they do, and so on the behavior side, because that's typically what people think about is for referrals. So if you have a student X, Y, or Z, uh, they do some type of behavior in the classroom. A teacher wants to be able to document that. And so as they document on Skyward, they kind of have a choice. It's like, okay, I'm going to address it within the class, which is typically a tier one response. Teacher does their best teacher intervention of some sort, whether it be calling home, whether it be talking to them one-on-one, um, but it still gets documented. So eventually if that behavior continues and continues on, it not only goes to the office, we monitor that and we say, hey, this is student X, Y, or Z. That same behavior is happening in multiple classes. We now maybe this needs to be a referral to go to our problem solving team and be able to talk through and say, okay, maybe there needs to be a little bit of intervention here, some re-teaching of, um, to hopefully correct the behavior. That would be the constitution for the referral then. And it's gone beyond the classroom teacher where there has to be something done outside of the classroom, which would, um, then kind of, uh, precipitate a referral of some sort.
Yep. Okay. Robert, did you have a question too?
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
That's what Gyllenhaal and thank you and congratulations on 25 years.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, would you be able to explain avid a little more in talking about what are some of the strategies that, that are being used?
Sure. So, um, WICER is an acronym and it's got writing, inquiry, um, collaboration, organization and reading. And so those are the five kind of key pillars, so to speak. They call them avid strategies that we work on. And within those, there's things that deal with note taking. They deal with, uh, marking the text when you're taking notes, how to do that. Uh, you may have heard of Cornell notes. That used to be what avid used to do almost exclusively. And they've kind of backed off that where schools can kind of do their own thing. Um, what we are doing at the middle school and what avid, kind of the ultimate goal is you do avid building wide. So all classrooms work on those strategies. All classrooms, um, kind of make that their go-to for presenting material for doing their lessons. They weave it in as much as they can do. Um, and if we all do that the same way or very similar and we use the same language, then you can imagine by the time a student gets sixth, seventh and eighth grade, it's just like old hat, they're just doing that. And what I'm saying is that we're already seeing that benefit. We have students come in and we say, hey, we're going to do some, um, guided note taking. Um, and the students go, okay, that, that doesn't have to be a teaching. They know, uh, new students, obviously you'd have to teach. So there's, those are the strategies that you want to lean on. And then there's different nuances to those that you can add them in. And then teachers collaborate and then they share. And we're working on that for this year is saying, hey, here's kind of a new strategy along these lines. Here's, um, what I've seen that has worked effectively in my classroom. And then we want to be able to show that in our, in our building. So we have, um, avid banners up, um, and we've kind of dabbled in it to kind of model it last year. And now this year I actually have to print more banners because more people wanted to do it, which is awesome. So that when you're in the middle school and you walk around, you should see these avid banners that then have, um, just examples of, of these strategies that are happening throughout the building.
Thanks. And then these, these cohorts you're just, you talked about are receiving hyper-focus on these or?
Yep. They, what they do is then, so we have a cohort now in seventh and eighth grade. So you're right, they get a little more addition to that and they dive in. But then there's some added pieces to it. They have something called an avid tutorial on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it's, it sounds like the word tutor, but it's not. And, um, there's adults that get some avid actually training. And it's more of a cognitive coaching. They ask the right questions and students actually end up answering their own question, um, or solve their own problem, um, just by people asking questions. So it takes a little bit of time to teach the students how that works. Um, and then they work in teams and it's not like crank out five, six, seven problems a, a session. So we're really clear with families is it's not a study hall. Um, but it gets them think, the thinking process going, gets the collaboration going, gets the inquiry going, um, which ultimately, um, really solidifies that learning in there. And then they also do things with careers and, um, beyond high school, uh, whether it be a trade school. And they're going to, last year they took, they went to Mankato for, uh, one of their, um, uh, field trips. Now this year I know that they, we partnered with HCI and I think we're going to take three. So we may go to different levels of education for students so they can, um, see what it's like, get on campus. Um, so they know what it feels like and kind of envision themselves as actually pursuing that beyond, which gets kids really excited.
Oh, this sounds great. And thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Amy?
Thanks, Greg, for your clear and thoughtful presentation. And it looks like you have a lot of good processes in place to move the middle school forward. Uh, my question for you is about your learner outcome goal of, um, with the students getting, um, the FC, you know, free reduced price lunch students, reducing the number of getting Fs. And I have to say, I was a little surprised at the high number for eighth grade.
Yep.
So I have several questions around that. And also I wanted to say, I think your goal is very aspirational and I'm really pulling for you to meet that goal. Uh, but it's going to take some work. So.
It is.
But with that high number for grade eight, do you think that is sort of a residual COVID effect? Where these students lost ground and aren't catching up as fast and getting frustrated? Or is it just the cohort has more problems than other grades? Or what do you, when you look at that forty six point one percent, what do you think is the reason underneath that?
There, there can be a couple of different things. And what I explained to our staff today is it could be just a one-class thing that gave up more Fs than other courses. There's a lot that can factor. The answer question about COVID, um, I don't like using COVID as an excuse. That's, this is kind of me. I don't, do I think it has, has some effect on what we are, last year's eighth graders? I do. They were kind of in a unique situation, um, for when COVID started compared to their middle school career. So I do think there is a piece of, um, some learning and some grit, um, that they didn't have. So I do think that was a part of it. Um, they were, I think that I believe the cohort will be fine when they're go through high school because they're phenomenal students, great kids on their own. And I think they're going to pick themselves up and be fine long-term. But I think they are probably behind a little bit in the rigor of eighth grade, just kind of caught up to them. Um, that's my best guess. Uh, you always want to, when you look at daddy, you don't want to do too much of a knee jerk reaction based on one, one year. Um, so I will be watching carefully. And I think some of the things that we put in place this year with the change of PLC will maybe assure us that, um, we see drastically improved results next year.
All right. That's actually very interesting and helpful. My next question then would be for those students who just finished eighth grade and going into ninth grade, what sort of communication do you do with the high school about, you know, that group moving forward? Are they given a blank slate or do you try to? Give some extra instruction to the high school of what?
Yeah, part of, uh, over the last several years, um, the big thing is, is that you like to give kids clean slates. However, that being said, when you're talking about academics and things of this nature, it's important to note that when we pull data, like at the middle school, we pull their elementary data as well. And the high school, I'm going to, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm assuming when they look at their cohort they're getting in, they're going to pull it through their middle school career and, um, to be able to look and see, okay, what are we getting? A lot of it is when you're placing students in classics, classes, especially like math classes or they're, um, if anyone's going to take an honors class, uh, that will say a lot about a cohort because then they do dive deeper because they don't want to set kids up into classes that, um, are maybe above their head. So they are getting a pretty clear picture. Uh, the high school has always been very good about if they have a question specifically, our, um, student support teams, our counselors and social worker, um, and psychologists, they, they communicate regularly if they have a question. Um, and we at the middle school, then if we, we have a few kids that we have a list of that we reach out ahead of time and say, hey, keep an eye on this, here's what we've seen, um, make sure they get these supports right away. So you, we do those pieces as well, but as a larger group, we don't communicate and it's a fine line. You don't want to give them a, a perception. You want them to have, like I said, that clean start, so to speak, but the high school has access, um, to drill back when they start, if they start seeing any concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, Jenny?
Thank you, Greg. Um, I'm going to not go in the proper order of the questions here. I'm going back to MTSS, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, you mentioned restructuring MTS. Is that going to be mainly focusing on tier one to kind of strengthen that and keep as many students as possible on that level? Or do you, does it, are you going, does that include changes just overall to all the tiers?
We're going to, we're going to start with tier one because that's where the largest number of your students should fall. About eighty percent of those students should be in that tier one category. So that is the logical place to start. And if we can solidify that, um, the others pieces should, um, fall into place. But that's not to say we're not looking at the tier two, tier three and evaluating those as well, um, to make sure that those programs are also meeting the needs or interventions are meeting the needs of the students that we're sending that direction.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Greg, I had a couple of questions, um, before I let you go there. Um, following up on Amy's, uh, question about the SMART goal regarding the absent quarter two, um, how did you come up with the nine percent goal?
That's all part of a grant. So I actually did not come up with that goal. It was just part of a grant that the district has, um, the Hope Langston shared it with me and we just literally took the language from that grant and since that's where we went in. Wasn't me.
Okay, thanks. And then, um, how far off are, is the middle school from achieving the twenty-four percent? You know, represented in referrals? Are you very far off? Are you?
No, it was, actually it wasn't. I apologize. I had written them down and I forgot, I meant to bring them and I forgot to, but it was not, um, what I call it. It's not like an extreme number. It's what I'll, I'll call that gray reasonable area where it's not where we want to be. But it's really, that's why I say that I think when we go down and really solidify the MTSS process, I envisioned that actually putting us over the hump to get us to the other direction.
Oh, that's very positive. And then, um, can you talk a little bit about the youth center?
Yeah. So the middle school youth center, it's after school, uh, Monday through Thursdays. And when they have a tutoring component that all students participate in, right? For the first half, and then they do, uh, activities, uh, whether it be team building or just fun activities that interest kids, um, for the second part. And so it's always been a draw for our students of color. Um, but I will say now over the last several years, our, um, more of our white students actually are also participating, which I was excited to see because I, I didn't like the visual, like, be prior to COVID, that it was like just a, a program for students of color. If that's not where it was designed to be, um, so that's now we seem to have a really healthy mix in there. Um, I think it built a stronger program and kids have someplace safe to go, get some homework help, build connections, be able to still hang out with their friends. Um, so it's really a positive experience for them after school.
Sounds like it. About an hour, ninety minutes, two hours?
Yeah, it goes from three o'clock till four forty-five.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much, Greg.
Yep.
Next, we have activities director, John Mahal. Will be presenting to the board, the continuous school improvement plan for the activities department. The presentation includes a progress report on last year's academic year as well as goals for this year coming up twenty-three, twenty-four. How can John?
All right. We're all queued up. All right. Uh, well, good evening, uh, Dr. Hellman, school board. Thanks for having me here this evening to present to you all. Appreciate the opportunity. Uh, before I begin, I just want to let you know a little bit about me. Uh, again, my name is John Mahal. And, uh, in the fall of two thousand and one, I started over at the, uh, the old middle school and taught there for two years. Yeah, great place. Um, and I was able to teach in the middle school for nine years as a special education teacher. And then I, uh, I guess I graduated from eighth grade and went up to the high school for about five years, uh, before, uh, I transitioned into the, the world of administration. I went to Sweeney Elementary in Shakopee, uh, for just shy of five years. And then the last five years I've been principal at Hawthorne Elementary in Albert Lee. And then, uh, last year, uh, throughout the, my principalship, you know, I had a great opportunity to be there, learned a lot, I really enjoyed my time away, but there was just kind of that calling for a, a new, opportunity, a, a new challenge within my educational journey. And I wanted to try to get closer to home if at all possible. And, uh, the stars aligned and I was able to, to be able to be here to interview and go through that process. And I was very fortunate to be selected to be the activities director. To the, fits really well with who I am or what I try to be in terms of, uh, activities and how it enhances the educational experience, uh, in so many different places across, uh, the country here. Um, if it's who my family is, we're very active and busy all the time. And, uh, I just, I think it's going to be a great challenge. So I really look forward to, uh, being here and serving, uh, the community. So that's a little bit about me. So similar to what, uh, Greg had in his, uh, presentation, we have our strategic plan, our vision. Uh, these next few slides are very similar. Uh, again, I come at it or we come to it in terms of how does that vision, uh, work within activities? And how can we again, support the educational experience of our students? Cause we know, uh, that the both, both need to be connected for a, a full experience for our students. So again, we want to prepare our students for lifelong success, uh, and develop those critical thinkers. And, and again, curiosity for, to engage our, in our society. So, uh, again, we're looking to do that as well on the activity side. How are we doing it? Uh, you know, the activities department and activities in general is a very people-oriented, uh, department. We have to think about our relationships with our coaches, our students, um, our advisors, the referees, uh, the grounds crew, uh, all the people that do a lot of the scheduling. Uh, so there's a lot of people that we have to engage in order to make it all happen. With the learner outcome for the students, the equity, of course, uh, for every student to have a fair opportunity. Communication, uh, I'm learning as I've been in the job for a couple of months now. Communication is extremely important, uh, to let everybody know about what's going on. Uh, stewardship, uh, was working with that today, uh, around busing. Uh, and then also the different community partnerships that we, um, that we have instilled already. Again, our district benchmarks, we work to support that. And then our school improvement plan and purpose, again, similar to what's going on. We have, you know, the clear set of shared goals, uh, align it with a strategic plan, inspire action, aligning efforts. And then, uh, we won't turn it on now just because it takes a little bit of time. But I would encourage you to at some point, click on that link that the state high school league, uh, put out here this past summer around, uh, more than membership and the partnership. It's a great video, uh, just talking through a little bit about what the state high school league, uh, is trying to, to do to support all of our students, uh, across the state here. It's a great video, uh just talking through a little bit about what the State High School League uh is trying to to do to support all of our students uh across the state here. And again, if we want to, of course, prepare every student for lifelong success. Okay, so I tried not to miss anything, but uh so if if you see something that is maybe not on here, please let me know because I'm happy to put it on. Uh but in talking with Bubba Sullivan, uh some of the key reflections and stories that we uh went through, uh the student participation, you can see right there in our fine arts department or areas or clubs. We had hundred, hundred and twenty-one students participate. Uh so that's eleven percent of our student body. Uh in athletics, we had eight hundred and thirty-nine students, which was seventy-six percent of our student body, which is fantastic. Again, we would love to see those numbers increase. Uh and I think in a couple of slides, you'll see we've got a chance for that to happen. The majority of our student responses from surveys were uh extremely positive. Uh they really enjoyed their time, their experience with uh the programs that they were in. Coaches and advisors, they really care about the students. They care about the programs that they're supporting. Uh and as I met with people this summer individually to kind of understand a little bit more of who they are and and what they're about and talk more about their programs, that really rang true as well. You can see the conference championships that happened last year, the section finalists, the state qualifiers, uh and then the state championship there as well. Uh and now with moving to a uh different section, I guess, or or you know, we're not no longer in four A, we're now in three A in many of our activities. Uh I a lot of our coaches are feeling very uh they're very excited and very interested in how this year can go because they think they're gonna hopefully be able to add to a lot of those. So when I'm here up here next year, uh presenting, it'll be hopefully a bigger list. So the goal, here are the goals from last year. There's a family engagement goal of having eighty percent of respondents will rate their child's overall experience four or five on a five-point scale. And you can see that in quarters one and three, when the surveys were uh sent out, that uh it was met at eighty-two percent. The learner outcomes for the students to be able to also be surveyed was, you know, my participation in this for activity has helped me feel more connected to my school or community, which is a big deal. And you can see, again, same deal, quarter one and three survey, and that was at eighty percent. And then our anti-racism goal, Bleacher Captains. So there's a new program for our building uh or our district last year uh in terms of we have trained some uh a group of students uh who are in the crowd and they have the opportunity to now uh lead cheers, lead some chants uh and and basically be great positive role models for our student body. So that uh again, we're we're saying positive things uh rather than any negative things that that may come out of maybe certain situations or the the end of a game kind of a thing. And so you can see there were uh our the spectator supervisors or the adult that's assigned to that to each game. Um they'll report positive student expected behavior at one or a hundred percent. And in quarters one and three, you can see the survey data was ninety-five percent. So we technically missed, but we were very close to um to meeting that goal. So with that, uh this year, uh gonna continue basically kind of the trend of what the goals were. So we want to be able to see a three percent gain, so eighty-five percent within a family engagement survey data will come back. Uh you know, the the overall, the experience was a four or better within that uh scale. Uh the learner outcomes, we also want that to be a three percent increase so that they feel more connected to the school and the community. And then the uh anti-racism goal, like even if we would have met that at a hundred percent, that would always continue to be at one hundred percent. Um because we want to make sure that we're having that positive student behavior uh at all of our NHS home events and away as well. So how do we do that? Some action steps. Um you know, I met with our head coaches, our fall head coaches. I shared this information with them so that they kind of have an idea. And this has been, I think, a fairly standard practice overall in terms of having conversation uh and sharing this goal or this information with them ahead of time. So they know that surveys are going to be sent out. Uh but I still want to make sure, put it on their radar so that they know um what's going to be happening, part of that communication. So they have the opportunity to, then parents have that opportunity to go through the surveys um through email and um available online toward the end of each season. Want to make sure that we're getting as much feedback from our families that we can. So we can, yes, hopefully have a lot of great successes, but you know, if we do have some challenges, what are those challenges? And what can we do to move forward to make sure that we're meeting uh those needs? Uh coaches will be encouraged through intentional team building exercises and relationship building. Uh I've seen that already this fall with multiple of our activities uh that have been meeting. They they've, coaches have been extremely intentional about building relationships, goal setting, and and really trying to set uh the stage for hopefully a very positive experience uh overall. Uh and again, students will have the opportunity to uh fill out a survey and let us know how we're doing at that. And then uh number three, we're gonna continue Bleacher Captains because this was a very, uh I think, overall positive experience uh and and uh overall uh program for the district last year. So we want to continue that. Uh we've done the uh bleacher captain training conversation. It's it's been, again, great for me to be able to learn and be able to see. But we want to make sure that, again, that that our bleacher captains are doing and showing or displaying acceptable behaviors, how to promote that positivity, uh because sometimes it is hard. You know, there might be a uh, I mean, referees I know never make bad calls, but let's pretend it happens. You know, someone might want to say something negative or somebody's uh an opponent's running down the sideline or, you know, what have you and and you know, they might see on TV or whatever, like, you know, uh some negative behaviors or or comments. We want to make sure that that's not us. And it was actually great because I know this this past Saturday, I'll just give you a quick story. Um football team scrimmaged. One of our, one of our players was going by and was gonna score and they didn't keep any score, but it would be like a touchdown, if you will. And as they were going by, you know, the student kind of made a signal like, huh huh, you know, I got it, kind of a thing. Coach, you'll pull them over. Hey, that's not who we are. We celebrate together as a team. We don't do that. That's not who we are. I thought it was a great uh opportu- a great learning opportunity for that student. Um and it really, Coach Yule was helping to set the tone for what we expect. Uh so again, I thought that was a great leadership there. So uh progress monitoring plan, we want to receive more family and student responses to be intentional about the Activities Office sending out surveys. I think last year it was sent to the coaches and then they were gonna send it out. I don't know that that always happened and and feedback coming back from Bubba. So we're gonna do, take more of the lead on that to try to make sure that it is getting out there. We can do our best to um complete surveys at end of each quarter uh or season uh to try, again, try to get maybe another data point uh in there as well because only two of the four were done last year. And then uh continue to monitor our spectator supervisor information to identify any trends and find any solutions uh as needed. And then I put on on the side there on the right, the student participation rates from twenty-twenty-two to where uh we are now. I thought this was an important slide to be able to share with you just based on uh the adjustments that we had to make within the Activities Department and fees. Um so you can see uh overall, we have either been able to maintain or even in some places grow uh with some of these activities. Uh so that's again, uh great to be able to see that participation and and interest uh is at a, you know, relatively high level there. All right, and you can see some great uh pictures that we had from last year. Uh so that is my uh presentation for you. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you so much, John. Questions or comments? Jeff?
John, thanks for your presentation. I'd like to welcome you and congratulate you and welcome you to the district. So as a a former uh well alumni and a student athlete, so I'm just excited about prospects of the future. And I just say, go Raiders and I I congratulate you again and and all success. I'll be, I'll be talking to you soon.
Excellent. Look forward to it.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Jenny and then Amy.
Thank you, John, and welcome.
Thank you.
Uh my questions might be actually more for Dr. Hellman or Val. I don't know. Um can someone mention um which sports and activities are managed through the community education department versus the high school?
See if I can get it. Um so the activities that are, do you mean the ones that specifically switched due to the budget reduction process?
Well, at this point, it all, I mean.
So there is um a cheerleading program and um the chess club are now run through um community ed. They also have a ski and snowboard club, even though we still have ski through the Activities Department as well. And I'm probably missing at least one, but those are the ones that are jumping right to the the front of my mind. Are there any ones you can think of?
Yes, I think those would be the most consistent, ongoing uh athletic or activity opportunities. Of course, community education is responsive to the interests of people within the community. So they also run other programs that would be for high school students that may not be the same, you know, year to year. So uh there could be, for example, um a particular class. Of course, my favorite one that I always share was the lightsaber dueling, which I think is a great activity, right? That was something that was for, you know, all ages. And the thing about community ed isn't, there's a lot of programming that would encompass high school students that aren't necessarily specifically only for high school students. They also partner with you. So for example, Taekwondo, you might see them practicing out uh on the foot, near the football field in the summer. That's not through the Activities Department. It's not even really technically through the Community Ed Department. We just facilitate that with an outside vendor. So that's the flavor of of what kinds of activities are run by community ed versus what is run by activities. Is that helpful?
Yes, and then that leads me to my next question um about the activities, payments, scholarships. I know that the Community Education Department ha- offers the community an opportunity to contribute to the scholarships for those fees. But does the high school also allow the community to contribute um to sports and activities scholarships? Or is it just parents only? Because I know when parents are filling out the registration form for activities, I believe there's an area that they can contribute, but I was just wondering if it's also open to the community too.
It is open to the community. Um we just created that. So that is some feedback that came out of last year's budget um prioritization process. And so that link is live on RevTrack on our website. And um I believe Activities is sharing it out, obviously, and putting it in there in their spaces for parents to see. Um because that's often where we see families wanting to support other students, but we will be sharing it out across the community as well.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Nice. Okay, Amy.
Welcome, John. Glad to have you back in the district and um thank you for giving this presentation. I have a comment and a question for you. Um so I am the mother of a high school graduate who loved both um a sport and also drama. So she did both. Uh and my concern is that with so many different sports activities that the fine arts activities may not quite get as much of your attention or you're thinking through the pro- of the goals and monitoring it. So I just want you to sort of be thinking of them as, I know there's a larger percentage of people who who participate in sports, but to really also be thinking about the other activities as well. Because I think there's a lot of kids who aren't sports kids and they, you know, we want to have good quality experience for them as well.
Is it okay to comment on that?
You bet.
Um so this summer I did meet with um, I sk- his last name escaping, is it Bob?
I'm Gregory B. Orland.
Thank you. Um so I I met with him to talk through again this fall and the uh musical that they're gonna be doing. Um I met just yesterday with our couple of our music staff to kind of talk through what does that look like? How can I continue to support um, you know, that programming as well? Because it definitely is a balance um for me with, yes, the athletic side of things, but there's also the, you know, the fine art side. That's also just as important. So definitely starting to get there and I can't wait to learn more about it as well.
Great. That's what I love to hear. Uh then my question is this. I I love the idea of the the bleacher coaches. And I am curious about how you choose them? And also, what do the students get out of taking on the position? Because it's
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's would be a great experience for them, but it also may put them in conflict with their peers. So if you could talk a little bit more about that.
I I mean, it definitely can because sometimes they're gonna have to. So when when the bleacher captain comes to a game or or an event, you know, they get um a more colorful lanyard than this that says Bleacher Captain on it. Um and that allows them to, within the game, to uh, you know, get some food and something to drink as well because it's important to feed them. But it also allows them to be in an opportunity of 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 leadership. And I think that's what we're trying to help our students uh understand a little bit about who they are. Uh maybe stepping outside of their comfort zone a little bit um to help support their students and staff. We also, again, we we have the spectator supervisor that's there to help them. You know, if maybe, you know, there's a really challenging moment or a student, um they're there to be able to help provide them some guidance or that adult can maybe more step in uh for that moment. But basically, like I said, it it's an opportunity for them to show leadership and and have the ability to kind of hopefully learn about themselves and grow and and maybe just understand a little bit more about what they can do a- a- as a person. Um because I know myself, I don't know that I would have been able to be in that type of role even when I was growing up. That wasn't something on my radar. But to have that opportunity for kids to be able to do that here, I think uh i- is a wonderful opportunity for them. Uh how are they selected? Um a lot of times, I I I believe they come out of mostly out of our rally program. Um where students are again, have the opportunity to do a lot of uh leadership opportunities within that programming. Uh I think they're, they have to apply. And then I know John Sand, Leah Sand, TJ Weeby and Mark Andrew helped lead the program. Um and we do specific training to be able to help, again, yes, learn the chants and the songs and 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 those types of things, but then again, what does it mean to uh, you know, if you need to tell somebody, hey, you know, let's not say that. Like, what does that look like? What does that sound like? So we're giving them that that practice. So if it were to come up, they they have some skills to do so.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Um I had similar question to that, and I guess I'll add, is there a debrief after each game to answer their questions, their concerns? Keep giving them that leadership opportunity?
Yep, so the the um supervisors have the opportunity to meet with the students right there, and then the supervisors fill out a Google form. And they put in some general information that would be helpful for us to know about so that uh again, we can either respond to or know that as we come back and do more meetings to make sure that it's a part of the training.
The supervisors are staff or other students?
Yes, staff. You're correct.
Thank you so much, John. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Corey?
Welcome, John. Good to see you. Uh not through the computer for once.
Yeah, exactly.
So I have a question concerning the student participation. So it's good to see half the teams this fall are steady, the other half have grown. I know when we had budget discussions this spring, we obviously did increase fees for the uh all sports and activities this year to help offset other programs to keep the activity bus and to uh keep middle school activities, which was obviously a good move on our part, I believe. Uh I know one concern we had was about equity and making sure all students would still be able to participate in their activities of choice. I'm curious, and this might be a question more for Val. I know you've only been on the clock for seven weeks, but uh how do scholarships look compared to last year at this point? Are we seeing the same number of scholarships come in with the increased cost of those activities or is it pretty norm?
Can I start first and then you can think about your answer? Um I know from the registrations that have come into the office, um and this is talking with uh Cheryl Doc and our administrative assistant that we know of. And this doesn't mean that there hasn't been any other financial hardships, but we've only had three people ask um for assistance. So um again, there's likely others, but that's the ones that we know of.
And Jack, can I, so that that includes, when you talk about only three people who have asked for assistance, there's still the tiered system of people paying a one rate for um for people who pay the full price for lunch, another for reduced and a third for so. And a third for so this is that that three is beyond that tiered system already. Does that make sense, Corey?
Say that again, sorry.
So there's a tiered program where if I pay full price for lunch, I pay the highest fee, and then there's a reduction. If I qualify for reduced lunch, and then a further reduction if I qualify for free lunch. So that. Is already in the mix, and then beyond that, three people have asked for additional support.
Sounds good. Thank you.
And if I can take the opportunity, um, I just learned that so far with that community link that Jenny asked about in terms of. Can people from the community provide funding towards scholarships through August sixteenth? The community has donated seven hundred and eighty dollars so far, just through that link with, I think. Reasonable but fairly minimal promotion at this point.
Where can people find that?
Find it right on our website. It was in uh District Update Number Two. You can find it in the news page.
Um, I'm just going to add a couple of comments. Um, any data I would have is totally anecdotal, just for the record, but. Um, I do think that there are more families that qualify for the uh free and reduced status because of the um new eligibility through the Medicaid system. So. That I think in and of itself is probably going to look a little bit different than last year. Um, or maybe last year was the first year of that pilot. I think it might have been. So it might be similar. Um, but that is one thing that I think is slightly different than what we had seen pre-COVID. And um, I have not heard dramatic requests. Um, I actually, the data I've had is that in. The participation numbers have increased in several activities uh despite the fees, which is a great place to be, but. We do have that um donation option live, and um I've emailed both the secondary buildings to. Determine what the process looks like to kind of determine who gets the funds and how that works out. But for the most part, the um. The message that we've provided is if if there's a request, we're gonna grant it because we want students to participate. So. That helpful?
It is a follow-up question. That's okay. I know that when the federal government was providing free meals, we had a reduction in the number of families who. Filled out forms that would qualify for such programs. Do we expect that the Medicaid um qualification, since it's automatic? Will mitigate some of those misses, if you will, of people not filling out the forms that may qualify for those scholarships?
Yes, so um, there, I'm pretty sure that fiscal twenty-three was the first year. Um, because our compensatory calculation is is driven off the prior year count, and it was dramatically higher. Um, so we saw. Um, I'm not offended that you don't remember this from my general presentation, but. We saw a pretty substantial increase, um, like probably four hundred thousand dollars um due to that um increased number of. Um, free and reduced students qualifying. So that was a positive for sure. Um. But it's a pilot, so hopefully they'll continue with that strategy, but I do think that that will play into the numbers just a little bit.
Thank you.
Yep. And do families self-select what tier um payment they're supposed to do, or is there some kind of automated system?
Yep, so in Affinity, sorry, I'm just taking your thunder here. Um, in Affinity, it actually talks behind the scenes to our student information system. And so it's checking that. So if they select that they are free or reduced, it's verifying that against the data we have in the system. And if it doesn't match for some reason, it doesn't let them move forward. Um, we have a handful of situations where they just submitted the application, and then we work with. Child Nutrition um Activities Department works with them to make sure that everything's up to date um and that they get registered in the right bucket. But. There is a process for that so that they can do it on their own um without having to. To do that as long as it matches what's in Skyward.
Great, thank you. Yep. Anyone else question or comment? Did you have some comments?
I just have, uh, so again, I hope that people can see we have a very skilled leader. And John Mahal joining our district. We're so thrilled to have someone with his administrative experience in the role. So we thank John uh for choosing us. Um, all educators have lots of choices these days. We're pleased when quality people choose us. And I want to just emphasize. The um, the bleacher captain program. And I just, I want to speak directly to the community right now in that. We're putting a lot of effort uh into teaching our students. How to cheer for our teams and not against the other team or against the referee. And you hear all of the work that goes into training these bleacher captains, and it is a great leadership opportunity. So that is something that they get, right? They get the opportunity to learn. That discomfort that you have from time to time of leadership and also. The reward of seeing things that you've done turn out really well. So it's a great laboratory for kids to be able to develop those skills. But we also have to remember that children learn how to behave at certain events by the behavior that they witness in the adults. And so as a superintendent, I can tell you that for the last several years, I it's it's not a week that goes by that I don't see about some. Really, I'm like, really? That happened at a high school athletics game or a high school athletics event? And more often than not, it is not the students, it is the adults. And so we are putting a lot of our time into making sure that we're teaching our student body the appropriate way to cheer for their school. And not against the other school, against the referees, et cetera. How to act with grace and class in both victory and defeat. The best thing that we can do as adults is to model for the kids the behavior that we would like Northfield to be known for. I care about all of Minnesota, but I really care about us. And so what I expect is that our student body. And the adults who also support our teams model what it is to be passionate, to be loud, to cheer your team on. And to be gracious in both defeat and victory. One of the things that we know from educational-based athletics. Is it teaches life skills. How many people during the budget prioritization process last year emphasized? The life skills that educational-based athletics show. And one of those things that I personally had from my experience in educational-based athletics, because I was not a great athlete. I learned a lot about how to handle disappointment. And that's what we're talking about. What we're talking about is when people are disappointed and how we react to disappointment. Our students are leading the way, and our adults in the community need to rally around them as well. And I just asked the board and I ask everyone who's watching uh this evening to make sure that we do good modeling for our students. Uh, that is the best thing that we can do to have a great reputation as a place that supports athletics in in the rightful way. If that makes sense. So I want to thank John for continuing the program, the spectator supervisors who have that hard work to do. And I think we really, we're keeping data on it, right? And so while we want a hundred percent. And when we look at the data, ninety-five percent, that five percent of times where it wasn't perfect, was not like it was a train wreck, right? It was something. Fairly minor, and that's what we want to keep going this year. So thanks, John, for continuing that for this program that Baba Sullivan started last year. We saw some really positive uh results from it, and we expect even more positive results this year.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, we are at item C Superintendent's area of focus for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. Dr. Hellman will share a draft of his focus areas for this upcoming school year. This will be an item for individual action at the next board meeting.
So board members, I just want to share that there was an updated version uh in the table file. So this year, in addition to the forty-one job responsibilities that are organized around eight ma- uh major topic areas that are in my annual evaluation. I have put forward every year a handful of areas that board members can expect that I'm going to spend a little bit more time on. And so uh, these four areas I will just highlight briefly and tell you how I'm going to monitor the progress. This is. Continuous improvement in how I present these to you. Um, not every single focus area lends itself to the exact same method of reporting progress. So uh, the first focus area is really around the Read Act. So we know that the Read Act is uh an action that was taken by the Minnesota Legislature. To dramatically change the requirements and uh the expectations for teaching reading in Minnesota. It's a multi-year implementation. And it is one of the most important. I I've told you before, I think it's one of the better pieces of legislation that I uh read. It was really something where um Representative Beddelson, who is the lead author on that bill. Listened to a ton of different perspectives. Not everyone was happy at the end, which means we, she probably did all right. And it is rooted in the evidence and the science of reading. And so one of the areas of focus, of course, will be um supporting Hope Langston. Our principals, our literacy leads, so that we are implementing this Read Act in a way that gets the best results so that we can make sure that every child. Has that gift of reading, especially at that end of a third grade benchmark. What I'll do is I will provide you with a quarterly update about the steps that we are taking. And so I will share with you. At the end of quarter one, roughly at the end of quarter one, here are the steps we've taken in the last quarter to work toward implementation. Some quarters, there might be quite a few steps. Other quarters, there may be fewer, as we sometimes one step might take quite a bit more time. Than another quarter step. So we'll keep you updated. That's how I will, I will report to you quarterly um how we are progressing. The second focus area is to uh really try to help facilitate the implementation of new state legislation within the district. You've seen the Gantt chart that the Minnesota School Boards Association has produced. I'm fairly certain it's nine-point Arial font. And that takes six pages to be able to show all of the legislation, not all that has to be implemented this year, right? But it's implemented over the next several years. So we already have a, I'm, I'm, when I tell you. That we are doing something every day with legislation, I am not joking. Every day, there's something, okay, what about this? This was passed in the legislature. The deadline is this, or the timeframe limitation is this. What are the things that we've taken? Or there might be a question about how does this affect this particular group of staff members? When I tell you it's every day, it's every day. And so quarterly, I will use that Gantt chart. As a way to report to you how we are progressing. You've already taken a number of actions in terms of updating our policies. To align with those new legislative requirements. So we're gonna show with you where we are at, and frankly, in some of it, it's going to be where we are not yet. Because there is a lot to get done, and it is very aspirational uh for the legislature to have expected us to get as much done. As is in the law so early uh in the biennium. But we're going to report to you honestly about where are we at with. What we've accomplished and what have we yet to accomplish, and we think this is just an important part of the superintendent's office. Uh, I am going to continue a a focus area of seeking feedback uh from our black Hispanic and indigenous students. Uh, parents of our black Hispanic indigenous and indigenous students about their school experience and the ways that the district can improve this. We've had several uh specific focus groups about giving us the feedback about those students' experiences. And it has been robust, it's been rich, and it has really helped us to make sure that we're fulfilling our version, our vision of. Preparing every student for lifelong success and making sure that every student has a genuinely fair opportunity to pursue. Their version of the American dream. So we're going to continue this uh goal. And again, what I'll do is be providing you quarterly updates there as well um about the um. Parent groups that we've met with and other ways that we're using that feedback uh or hearing that feedback to improve uh those students' experience. And then finally, uh, this goal, this, excuse me, this focus area. Uh, does not necessarily have a progress monitoring plan associated with it. I I went back and forth on it, but. The execution of this focus area is really the boards to determine. But I see it as my role to make sure that you have uh the structure, the information. Um, and then appropriate timelines for various options uh related to what bond referendum questions, if any. You would like to put on the November twenty twenty-four ballot to address the substantial facility improvements needed at Northfield High School. Um, one thing that many people agree on is that we need to do something to update the high school. Uh, people have reasonably different pathways in which they think is the right thing to do. That is often the case in a democracy, right? When we ask people to participate in this process, you, the elected representatives of the community, to determine. What are the facility updates uh that need to take place? One of our six strategic commitments is to stewardship. We have been doing everything that we are able to with our annual budget to maintain the high school to the best of our ability. But we are coming to some inflection points during this process. I can quote, point back to you where we said, yep, we're okay right now. In this particular area, but within a year or so, we're going to have real concerns. And that year or so is going to be up. And so my job is to provide you the structure for the conversation. The information about the different options that you would have to put before the community, if in your wisdom, you so chose to put something on the ballot. And then finally, what are the timelines that you would need to follow to be able to uh achieve having something on the ballot in two thousand and twenty-four? So my role will be to help you have the information, the processes, um, and then the timelines for you to be able to make. What decision you'd like to do. And then, of course, I will execute whatever plan you adopt. Um, I will execute it to the best of my ability all the way through election date to provide the community the information. So that's my fourth focus area. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions, board members? Amy?
It's not really a question. I just wanted to thank you for putting these together. I think you've come up with four really good focus areas and everything else you do too on top of that. But I think your year is going to be a very full year.
And and just want to be super clear that this, in addition to this, of course, I'm using the strategic plan as my guide to to the work, right? These are just some areas that will receive some specific focus. So thank you for those comments.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Dr. Hellman.
My pleasure.
Right. Item six is the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in the table file added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Jeff, second. Second by Robert. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Right, next we have our items for action, and we have eight, including a resolution. The first item for individual action is the Sharing Our Roots contract. I'll take a motion, and then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve the contract with Sharing Our Roots as presented? At the August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting to formalize both parties' commitment to further the project. Move by Jenny, second by Amy. Right? Are there any um? Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Hellman or Val? Okay. We have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have a media contract, LMR Media Contract, will help the district identify and price advertising opportunities on behalf of the district. Create business-to-business agreements for the district and be an advocate for the district booster clubs sponsoring events. Is there a motion to approve the LMR media contract as presented at the August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three school board? Move by Amy, second by Jeff. Thank you. Okay, are there any comments or questions at this time?
I just have one comment. Uh, so I just want to share that uh Val and John Mahal and I met with Lance today from LMR Media. Uh, to talk about the pathway forward. Uh, the first item that we're really working on uh with this is the swimming scoreboard, the swimming scoreboard at the middle school. And as this is really the first attempt that we're using under policy eight oh nine point one, which is the sponsorship of district equipment. So I just want to be really clear in that uh policy, it talks about something about the administration just consulting with the board about this sponsorship. And so. I wanted just to share that part in that this LMR media contract is one of those ways that we're consulting with you. And as we move forward with this. This is not an area where we have a tremendous amount of experience yet. As we move forward, as we see that process. We will suggest any potential changes to eight oh nine point one that would allow us to facilitate the sponsorship of these events in an efficient way. Um, what I will tell you is that I think Val and I were and John were very excited. Uh, about the ideas and the opportunities in this area that lay ahead under Lance's guidance. And so I thank the board for considering this, and I just wanted to point out that part of eight oh nine point one. You know, that talks about consulting with the board about the sponsorships, and this is one of the ways uh that we're doing that. So. Just wanted to bring that up, and if people have any questions, uh Val or I would be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the grant writer for the district. The board will be asked to formally approve the contract at a future board meeting tonight. Is there a motion to authorize administration to negotiate a contract with Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, HCI? For no more than forty-five thousand dollars for grant writing services. Which represents roughly half the cost of hiring a second, a full-time grant writer for HCI. Okay, move by Robert. Thank you. Second by Ben. Okay, are there any questions or comments?
I I will just make, there is a different recommendation today, right, that I made two weeks ago, and that is how this has evolved that um. Cutting to the chase, uh HCI uh has had one grant writer. They had reached out to us to consider uh about partnering on a grant writer. It will now end up being where they would have two full-time grant writers, and we are basically supplying the funds to support a half of those FTE. So that doesn't mean that one person necessarily would only be assigned to us. We get the benefit of having both grant writers. And the tools for the grant reporting through HCI's data analytics. I think this is an. I think this is an excellent example of our strategic commen- commendable stewardship and partnership. So slightly different than before because of the way that it worked out with HCI. And we all know, um, or many people in the community know that we've had a real advantage in applying for grants when we've done so with HCI, because as HCI goes, as they get grants to support students, that has a benefit to us. And then they've also been a great partner that has allowed us to get more points on a lot of grant applications because we have that backbone community sponsor or supporter.
And do you want to make any comments on what you believe the logistics of that looks like, or?
Yeah, so in terms of just the contract?
The time spent, or how they will direct their attention to the district's needs?
Yeah, so, right, we will collaborate, um, starting with the two hundred and thirty million plus uh, dollars worth of grants that are available uh, from the, from MDE because of the most recent legislative session. There are a number of those grants that are named grants, that are written in statute, that we know align with our strategic plan. In addition, there are a number of federal grants that may not just be part of the Education Department. They might be part of, for example, the Department of Energy around updating school facilities in in terms of energy savings and um, those kinds of replacements that could make the district's carbon footprint smaller. So that's just a couple of examples of the kinds of things where we're gonna try to leverage all of those items. And the good news is having the tight collaboration that we've had with HCI, uh, we will be able to meet and talk through what are our priorities. They know our strategic plan, they know our benchmarks. Of course, HCI is behind, they're the backbone partner for Northfield Promise. We all know that our benchmarks are very similar to Northfield Promises for this very reason. And we know that we're one of the first communities in the country to align the school district benchmarks with these community organizations that are also focused on helping students thrive uh, into adulthood. So we have a lot of stars aligning right now, and it's quite exciting uh, about the opportunities that will move forward. Because of HCI's network, right, outside of the necessary, the education-based space, we also think there are grant opportunities that we probably wouldn't have even necessarily been aware of that through HCI's network would also has a po- have a positive impact on it. So the stars are aligning with this one, and we're very hopeful that it will result in some substantial funding for the district.
Nice. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Uh, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item D is the proposed seven-day, um, seven-period day at Northfield Middle School. The administration is proposing to maintain the middle school's seven-period day beyond twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, while still making the two-point-oh FTE budget reduction target set in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four priority-based budget reduction plan. I'll take a motion, and then we can have a discussion. Is there a motion to maintain the middle school's seven-period day beyond twenty twenty-three, twenty-four as presented at the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting?
Motion.
Okay, moved by Cory, second. By Robert, thank you. Okay, are there any questions or comments? Any comments? No. All right, um, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next is our proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five agreement with the Northfield Education Association. I had the privilege of sitting on, um, sitting in on this meeting between the district and the Northfield Educators Association, along with Vice Chair Cory Butler and Clerk Amy Gerwitz. I was especially impressed by the mutual respect both parties had for each other as we went back and forth on various items of importance to both sides. It was highly, it was highly evident that our teaching staff are highly qualified and highly invested in the success of our students. As for their district administration, they are seasoned professionals whom the association uh, respects and who made me proud as they considered the requests from the association and presented them with responses. The association was also reasonable and informed, as was our district administration. The district has reached a tentative agreement with the Northfield Education Association for a two-year agreement covering July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. The contract includes a six percent base salary increase in twenty-three, twenty-four, and a three percent base salary increase in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. It includes a five percent increase to the district's health insurance contribution in each year of the agreement. The NEA membership is expected to vote on ratification by the end of the month, August thirty-first. I'll take a motion, and then we can open any discussion. Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-five agreement with the Northfield Education Association as negotiated?
Motion.
Okay, moved by Cory, second by Amy, thank you. All right, um, we will, um, I'll take any comments or questions at this time. You can direct them to Val or Dr. Hillman. I don't see Molly. Um, all right, are there any questions or comments? Hey, Robert?
Well, I just would like to note what a, what a pleasure will be to vote on this tentative agreement. I I think it really shows the value that we we place on our, our high-quality staff and demonstrates our commitment to ample compensation and and excellent working conditions. And I really would like to express my appreciation for our administrative team and the negotiation team from the NEA for for coming to this, this agreement.
Very nice, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I would just make one comment, if that's okay? So I'm just really grateful for the mutual respect that the district and the association have developed over several decades. Uh, it was, it's not always uh, that we're fortunate enough to have a vigorous debate about things like salary benefits and working conditions, uh, rooted in mutual respect, but it is absolutely the case here. And I think this contract really does represent an investment in our teachers, both who are here today and those who we will recruit and retain uh, in years to come. Uh, the agreement really addresses things like inflationary pressures, but also maintains a competitive advantage in salary and benefits for the district to attract and retain teachers in what is the most highly contested employment market in my twenty-nine years in public education. It puts us in a position where we will be the district of choice for many people who are either looking uh, to move or people looking for their first job out of college. And I can tell you that the crisis that we have in the depth of our teacher application pools is not going to get any better anytime soon. This is one s- uh, step where we are gonna hopefully be able to rise above that tide. So I'm really grateful for uh, the support that this community has for our teachers uh, and the compensation that it takes to make sure that they are supported, uh, retained, and then recruiting new people to our community. The results that I shared with you earlier from our MC, our, a result, the, the results that Mr. Mahal shared about the way that kids feel about their school through activities, that's a result of high-quality professional staff, and that is what we hear, have here in the district. So I'm thankful to all uh, for the really robust and vigorous process that came to a positive result.
Hey, Ben?
Yeah, thanks for those comments, man. And I just reflecting here as I was sitting here at the teacher welcome event this morning, you know, and everybody walking in and start off for the new school year, and I'm just excited to be in a place to support this agreement tonight. And wanted to thank the negotiation group from the district, as well as from the association. Happy to be starting up a, the year in a strong place. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And, and now we're on to item F, which is the approval of policy four, four, eight. The tentative agreement reached with the Northfield Education Association covering July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-five includes the adoption of policy four, four, eight, the district-paid maternity leave. Policy four, four, eight will be implemented only if the NEA approves the two-year agreement covering July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as proposed. Is there a motion to approve policy four, four, eight, district-paid maternity leave as negotiating, as negotiated, going into effect upon ratification of the twenty-three, twenty-five agreement by the NEA membership? Okay, moved by Jenny, a second, Amy. Okay, are there any questions or comments? All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item G is our co-curricular additions. District administration is requesting authorization to hire an assistant director for the fall play to ensure continuity of leadership into the future. I'll take a motion, then we can discuss. Is there a motion to approve the fall play assistant director stipend of three thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars? Moved by Amy? Like my Cory? Are there any um, comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And finally, a resolution reinstating a school board member, a school board member after a temporary vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence. In a resolution adopted on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the school board declared that a vacancy existed on the school board due to illness or prolonged absence from the district by school board member Noel Stratmon. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-three B dot oh nine subdivision four, Robert Coleman was appointed to fill the vacancy and to serve the remainder of the unexpired term of said school board member or until said school board member was again able to resume duties as a member of the school board, whichever date was earliest. On August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, school board member Noel Stratmon notified the school board of his ability to return, to resume duties as a member of the school board upon, upon adu- adoption of this resolution. We are grateful for Robert Coleman's service to our community. He has taken his duty seriously, participated wholeheartedly in committee assignments, completed formal board training, voted his conscience, given thoughtful comments, and asked excellent questions. He has put Northfield students first. Robert, it's been a pleasure to serve with you. You've made me a better board member in your short time with us. I know you will continue to serve our community for years to come in many different ways. I will take a motion first, then board members can make comments. Is there a motion to approve the resolution reinstating school board member after a temporary vacancy caused by illness or prolonged absence, which declares that Noel Stratmon is again a member of the school board with a term expiring the first Monday of January twenty twenty-five, and declares that the appointment of Robert Coleman to serve in the absence of the aforementioned school board member is hereby terminated with immediate effect? Moved by, moved by Robert? Okay, and second by Jeff. All right, um, I will now open the floor to any comments, and I understand Robert wants to go first.
Well, just during these last few moments up at the table here, I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you. Um, you know, to this board for, for tacking me to serve in this capacity with this temporary appointment and being there to answer my questions and helping me learn this role. Uh, to Dr. Hillman, Anita and Val for your, all of your kindness, your assistance, your answering of my many questions, and uh, for the patience that you have shown me. Uh, I've learned so much from, from all of you. Uh, over the course of the last few months, I've been able to see that you all truly care about the success of our district, and I know that commitment will continue. Even though it means stepping away, it will truly be a pleasure to vote to restore Noel to his position on the Board of Education. Uh, we know what his decades of service to this community have meant, and Noel, you have been missed at this table. Uh, I hope I've honored your place, and I wish you the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone um, wishing to make any comments at this point? Okay, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. I just wanted to um, thank Robert for stepping up, not only for stepping up and and serving, but um, all of the, the thoughtfulness that you put into your discussions here. Um, it, it just kind of proved to me um, that I think it comes from your compassion for kids and learning. And so that's awesome, and I just wanted to thank you. And then moving on to um, Noel, I just wanted to share kind of a fun fact. So Noel has been serving our school district for as many years as I've had birthdays. So I thought that was kind of fun to share. And um, congratulations on your reinstatement.
Very nice. Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else? Yes, Amy?
I just want to thank um, Robert for his time on the board. Uh, second everything that both Jenny and Claudia have said. You really stepped up, you'd be very engaged, you've been um, much, very much put to work with the committees, and you, you know, you've took it all on um, and just done a great job. So thank you for your time, and um, while we're happy to have Noel back, we'll miss you as well.
Okay, Jeff?
I'd like to thank uh, Robert for his willingness to serve and his attentiveness and his, his care and compassion about the students in our district. So I thank you for your service on that, and uh, and I welcome Noel back to the board. Thank you.
Nice. Great.
Well, you're right here, so I gotta look right at you. I'd like to thank Robert for your eight months of service. You really did exhibit the tenets of a quality school board member in that time. You came well-prepared for our meetings, for all your committee assignments. Uh, you were fierce in your advocacy for students, as well as for staff, and just an overall quality education system. Uh, and you came with thorough, thoughtful questions, and you will be missed at this board. And I too welcome Noel back, and I'll have my old buddy back, so got your seat right here.
Very nice. Thank you so much. Ben, would you like to?
Well, yeah, last but not least. Lots been said, and I can't really top that, but it's been a pleasure getting to know you, Robert, and I will miss sitting next to you and look forward to, I mean, working with you in the future in some capacity, so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hillman?
And I reiterate all of that, what has been said about Robert, and he and I have had wonderful discussion about his great service to the community. And of course, Noel is a legend in Northfield, and we welcome him back to the board. I I want to take the opportunity to point out that the legislature and its infinite wisdom provided this opportunity. It provided the opportunity for a board member who needs to step away for medical reasons for a period of time, so that they can focus on themselves and take care of themselves, appoint someone from the community, and then for the person to return. So often, we complain about legal pieces, and we think that the system doesn't always work. This is an example that Minnesota democracy works and that thoughtful legislation allows democratic bodies like this to continue operation uh, when one of its members have to, has to step aside for a while. I think it just goes to show that this is not a, a section that gets to be implemented very often, but it allowed Noel to step away for a period of time to get his health back in order and to come back uh, to the board, which he was first elected to by this community in nineteen eighty. This is an example of what good governance looks like. So thank you, Robert. Welcome back, Noel, and uh, those are my comments.
Yeah, okay. Anita, will you facilitate a roll call vote?
Butler?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Robert, thank you for your faithful service. It's obvious the sport appreciated you, and welcome back, Noel. Are these your items, Robert? Are these your items?
We got them.
Isn't he?
He was gonna switch the name.
There you are. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Anita. Right, item eight is items for information. I don't have anything to you, Dr. Hillman?
We do not.
Okay. Then we're on to our future meetings. Those are Mondays in this boardroom at six PM, September eleventh, September twenty-fifth, and October ninth. That is all the business that we have tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn? All right, thank you, second.
Second.
Okay, second by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you all.